I haven't added in a while because the last one got canceled and the one before that was... okay, cool.
They need to see the slide.
They also sent it via email, too.
Yeah, mine hasn't worked in a couple years.
Well, I just made it go down.
Alright, I'll go ahead and call this meeting of the April thirteenth, two thousand sixteen Planning Commission Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Absolutely, thank you. Chair Wilson?
Present.
Vice Chair Kirk is absent tonight. Commissioner Huber?
Here.
Commissioner Porter?
Here.
Commissioner Dew?
Present.
Thank you.
Alright, our first order of business is the approval of minutes from our February tenth, two thousand sixteen meeting. Oh, I apologize. We're gonna do the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Huber and Commissioner Dew. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, help us to do our very best this day, not by worrying about whether we are right, but by doing the right thing. May we understand that the roots of happiness grow deepest in the soil of service. Amen.
United States of America. God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, now we can move on to the approval of minutes from our February tenth, two thousand sixteen meeting.
I shall move.
I'll go ahead and second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Porter, a second by Chair Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those minutes have passed approval with the absence of Vice Chair Kirk.
Alright, as manager of housekeeping, if you wish to speak to an item before the Planning Commission this evening, if you'd please fill out a white card and give it to the secretary. I have one right now. Alright, agenda item number one.
Thank you Chair Wilson, fellow commissioners. Item number one is case PLN fifteen dash zero 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 thirty-four. It is a three-year time extension and modification to track one seven one nine nine, which consists of a two hundred and forty-six thousand square... two hundred and... two hundred and forty-six single-family residential lots, as well as an addition of a multi-function stormwater detention basins, recreation areas, walking paths, and the redesign of interior roadways and lot configurations on approximately eighty-acre building site, with a proposed mitigation mitigated negative declaration. This is located at the northwest corner of Olivine and Verbena Road. The applicant originally obtained approval in two thousand five for a two hundred and ninety-four lot subdivision. The revisions to the map lower that lot count to two forty-six. The proposal is a vesting map which would lock the standards in place that were in place when the modification and time extension was requested, and that was on September third of two thousand fifteen. The proposal includes a one point four acre detention park area. It's a tiered detention area where the majority of the storms would funnel into a fenced area that has a deeper depression, and then there would be provided more functionality to the upper basin as a park area. The drainage course that bisects the track also would contain a trail system that would also be used for bicyclists and pedestrians. There's also an additional cul-de-sacs, additional landscaping, and the developer also removed the thoroughfare NIAC that ran along the northern portion of the property. So that will also lessen some of the traffic burden for those properties that front NIAC. The proposal meets all of the design guidelines as approved last year, and staff recommends approval as conditioned, and we're available if you have any questions.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for agenda item number one. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this item?
Good evening. My name is Ryan Thomas with CV Communities. I'm the applicant. I just wanted to bring up a few more things. I think Scott did a good job of explaining the differences between the older map and the newer map. We originally, as Scott said, we had two hundred and ninety-four lots. We've reduced that to two hundred and forty-six. In doing that, I think we've provided a better land plan, but at the same time, sometimes, you know, I know, I understand that lot sizes are sometimes a problem, but our average lot size for this particular project was a little over eight thousand before, and now it is at a little over ninety-two hundred. So, we've done our best to try and kind of update with the current guidelines, but also based on, like I said, based on this new land plan, the lots, the average lots have gotten a lot bigger. So, I'll be happy to ask any questions that Scott can't answer.
Any questions? Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Alright, seeing none, I will go ahead and close and bring it back to the commission.
Chairman, adopt the attached mitigation negative declaration with the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project and adopt resolution number P sixteen dash zero zero six approving the subject vesting tentative track map requesting for modification and a time extension for a period of three years, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber, a second by Commissioner Dew. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That project has been approved with Vice Chair Kirk absent for the vote.
Thank you. Moving to agenda item number two.
Thank you Commissioner Chair. Item number two is case PLN fifteen dash zero 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 twenty-nine. It is a request to allow a new one hundred and forty-seven lot tentative track map. This was originally advertised and submitted and posted on the agenda as a as a three-year time extension and modification to track one seven zero three three, which consists of one hundred and forty-seven single-family residential lots, as well as the addition of a multi-function detention basin, recreation area, enhanced entry features at the exterior entrance sections, enhanced sidewalk access, and the redesign of interior roadways and lot configurations on an approximately forty-acre building site with a proposed mitigated negative declaration. This is located at the northeast corner of Mesa View Drive and La Mesa Road. As mentioned, the proponent, the proponent, the developer originally approached the city to extend and modify their original map. I just want to put on the record that that developer has since converted that application to a new map. This is allowed for in the subdivision map act by our code as well. It doesn't change the original environmental review that we did on this project, and that's before you today. It still would have the same impacts as a modified map, but what they're requesting is just a new map, which would start the life over. It doesn't affect the environmental as I stated. So with that, some of the details of this proposal, it's located within the Vista Verde specific plan. It's a forty-acre site. It's located within two planning areas that allow six thousand and five thousand square foot lots. This proposal actually averages an average lot size of seventy-two hundred square feet. The original approval was for two hundred and twelve lots. This is now a proposed subdivision of one hundred and forty-seven lots. Similar to the prior track that we looked at, it includes cul-de-sacs, a park site. It also functions as a detention basin. Also, this track has some more curvilinear streets, which adds some more uniqueness to the track layout. With that, it does comply with the single-family design guidelines as conditioned, and staff recommends approval, and we're available if you have any questions.
Alright, I will open up the public comment for agenda item number two. If there's anyone that wishes to speak to this item?
Chairman Wilson, members of the commission, my name is Bo Cooper. I'm the entitlement manager with United Engineering Group and the representative for this applicant. I think between the previous map and this one, you can kind of tell the differences of some of these guidelines that we've been working on. But anyway, we've reviewed all the conditions. We've been working with Scott and the staff on this for a while. We have no objections, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to agenda item number two? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to adopt the attached mitigated negative declaration with mitigation monitoring and report program for the project and adopt resolution number P dash sixteen zero zero nine approving the subject tentative track map for a period of three years, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
Second. I have a motion by Chair Wilson, a second by Commissioner Porter. A call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That project has been approved with Vice Chair Kirk absent for the vote.
Thank you. Agenda item number three.
Chairman Commissioners, staff recommends a continuance of PLN fifteen sixteen. It's agenda item number three to the May eleventh, two thousand sixteen Planning Commission Meeting.
I'll go ahead and open up public comment for agenda item number three, if anyone wishes to speak to this item. And I'll go ahead and close. I will make a motion to continue this item to our May eleventh, two thousand sixteen Planning Commission Meeting.
I have a motion by Chair Wilson, a second by Commissioner Dew to continue this item to the May eleventh regular Planning Commission Meeting. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that will be continued to May eleventh, two thousand sixteen, with Vice Chair Kirk absent for the vote.
And agenda item number four.
Thank you Chair Wilson. Item number four is case DEV fifteen dash zero 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 eight. It is a proposed municipal code amendment with an environmental exemption to establish new development criteria for residential-specific plans and plan unit developments. This would be applicable citywide. Staff has met with building industry representatives, and we have some more paths to investigate, and we'd like to pursue some other avenues as far as creating some criteria based on the type of lot count and a lot size potentially. So this could provide some more structure for developers in the future. But we asked that you open up the public hearing at least. We'd like to get some feedback on what's proposed as of today, so we can better address this issue when it's heard again, hopefully, if you continue it to the June hearing.
Any questions? Alright, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. I have one card from Gordon Nichols.
Good afternoon, everyone. First, let me commend you on your efficiency of getting through four items in less than fifteen minutes. It's really good. But we wanted to reiterate our letter that we sent, once again, with the staff's recommendation going for a forty-five day continuance to further discuss the number of nuances for the specific plan guidelines and these plan unit development guidelines. We have had a meeting on April fifth with the city staff, and we have another meeting scheduled on April twenty-sixth to continue the discussions with the city staff as well. Given the fact this is a three-minute comment card, probably not gonna get into all the nuances, but we are working diligently with the staff and want to continue all of the work that we've done previously with our tour, with our discussions, with our focus groups, to bring to you something that we can all agree on and something that everyone's on the same page. And I think a little bit more time to do that would be appropriate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to agenda item number two? I'm sorry, number four. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. I'll go ahead and make the motion to request a continuance to our June eighth, two thousand sixteen Planning Commission Meeting. Correct?
Second. Motion by Chair Wilson, a second by Commissioner Porter to continue this item to the June eighth Regular Planning Commission Meeting. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that will be continued to June eighth, two thousand sixteen, with Vice Chair Kirk absent from the vote.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we have a continued public hearing. Agenda item number five.
Yes, Chairman Commissioners, agenda item number five is a DEV fifteen zero four. It's a climate action plan to reduce greenhouse gases attributed to local activity within the city of Victorville. The cap will help Victorville comply with Assembly Bill AB thirty-two, the state legislation created to address global warming, by lowering emissions. Some background on this, in two thousand eight, the city partnered with twenty other cities in San Bernardino County to conduct a regional emission inventory and reduction plan. This plan was recently completed with the certification of an EIR. Then the partnership focused on creating individual local climate action plans. And the cap works by taking those two thousand eight baseline emissions determined by the inventory and develops measures to reduce the two thousand eight levels by fifteen percent or twenty-nine percent below business-as-usual levels. Cap also achieves a general plan air quality objective, streamlines the sequo process for developers with a screening table process, and adds a layer of legal protection for projects in regards to AB thirty-two. And finally, the plan develops a monitoring program. Staff requests that the commission recommend approval to the council, and if there are any questions, staff can assist.
Are there any questions? Alright, I'll go ahead and open up public comment for agenda item number five. If there's anyone here wishing to speak to agenda item number five. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion to recommend that the city council find that the climate action plan consistent and within the scope of the certified sandbag regional GHC reduction plan programmatic EIR pursuant to section one five one six eight C two of the California Environmental Quality Act and adopt resolution P dash fifteen dash zero five one recommending city council approval of the climate action plan case number DEV one five dash zero 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 four.
Second. I have a motion by Chair Wilson, a second by Commissioner Porter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, the climate action plan will be scheduled for the city council meeting for May seventeenth. That's our plan. This will be presented to them for approval with Vice Chair Kirk absent from the vote.
Alright. In compliance with the Brown Act, it is necessary for the Planning Commission to make available time for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that fall within the Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Please limit the length of your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? And I'll go ahead and close public comments. Moving on to new business, agenda item number six.
Thank you Commissioner Chair... Chair Wilson. Item number six is new business item. It's referencing to a hotel that the Planning Commission approved back in October of two thousand fifteen. The original approval required a raised center median along Amargosa Road. The applicant has met with engineering and fire staff to look at alternatives. The alternative that's been supported by engineering and fire staff is a gated access on the Northern Drive aisle. So, that would remove the requirement to install a raised center median. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission go ahead and modify that as worded in the memo there before you. We're available if you have any questions.
Any questions? I will go ahead and open up agenda item number six. Is there any public comment? Is there anyone that wishes to speak to agenda item number six? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment.
I'll move to approve the following... to approve the modification to site plan condition approval number forty-seven within resolution P fifteen zero four six.
I have a motion by Commissioner Porter, a second by Commissioner Dew to revise site plan condition number forty-seven of PLN fifteen dash zero 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 three one. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that condition will be revised with Vice Chair Kirk absent from the vote.
And then agenda item number seven is a communication from the Hispari Unified School District, the revised school facilities needs analysis. Thank you. I think we should have some public comment. Alright. I'll go ahead and open public comment for agenda item number seven.
Thank you. Currently, the BIA Baldi View Chapter is reviewing the Hispari Unified School District's school facilities needs analysis for two thousand sixteen. This is the second SFNA that the district has submitted this year. The first one, we made no public comment on, which resulted in a net reduction of the school fee. Unfortunately, the state made a correction to the per people grant amount, which will result in an increase to the Hispari Unified School District's previously lowered fee. So, I would ask that, if it were at all possible, to have a discussion with staff regarding a survey that was sent to them by the Delinka Group, which is the consultant that prepared the SFNA, and to request a brief consultation with staff prior to the eighteenth adoption date to discuss a survey that was sent to Victorville regarding seventy new units proposed over the next five years in the city of Victorville for the Hispari Unified School District. And we would like to hopefully get the city's input, because they did not respond to the survey, and talk to them about the numbers of projections. Once again, I think, probably should have shot an email over to Chris and Mike about this earlier, but I just happened to be here, so I'd like to request a consultation with them at a later date and hopefully get some clarity before the eighteenth. So, that's just my request.
Eighteenth of?
Next week, actually. Is when they're gonna be... is when they're gonna be adopting it.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
Eighteenth April. Do you guys think that will be an issue or...
Thank you, gentlemen.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to agenda item number seven? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. And now, it's an opportunity to provide for the Planning Commission to present items of interest at this time. Thank you. Commissioner Huber?
Yes, just a comment. Years ago, the Plan Commission had to pick the street names, and we'd spend more time trying to pick street names than we did with the item. I don't know when that quit, but way back when, we had to pick the street names.
Don't you guys have a list of names?
They have a list of names, yeah. Yeah. I was on the Plan Commission when we... yep, yep.
Are you looking for Huber Drive?
No, no. I'm not. I just thought it was interesting when I read that. The first item, they hadn't picked the names yet, and the second item, they had been picked.
And I brought this up in our pre-meeting, but if I could just get an update on the La Mesa extension between Cantina and the three ninety-five, and then also between the three ninety-five and Mesa View. Just because we saw, the track map came through, and it kind of made me think about that little section right there. So, it doesn't have to be tonight, but...
I can give you an update now.
Oh, great, thank you.
Yeah, it's a project that engineering has been working on. We hired a consultant who has designed the road and a new signal to connect on both sides, you know, from Mesa View to three ninety-five and from Cantina to Highway three ninety-five. And it's in plan check right now with Caltrans. So, we're trying to get a permit from Caltrans to construct that project. I hope that we have sufficient funds. There was a CFD on a tract that had funds for that project. There was also a contribution from Beazer Homes. And so, we're working with Caltrans now and on, you know, finalizing the cost estimates and the plans. And if you were to ask me, when will this go to construction? It's really hard to determine, because probably gonna have to go through several more reviews with Caltrans to get a permit. And I would say it could easily take six months or more before it would go to construction. That's just kind of a guesstimate on my part right now. But we are working on it, and I'm hoping it'll be sooner instead of later.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. And that is all I have. I will go ahead and return to our May eleventh, two thousand sixteen meeting. I will go ahead and adjourn to our May eleventh, two thousand sixteen meeting.